Got it? Good evening. You want to run our show? Mr. Brown, would you get the light there in the front?
Hello and welcome to this North Penn News update. I'm Alexa Duffy. Congratulations to the North Penn Marching Knights for being crowned the Group Five Open Division U.S. Band's National Champions. The Marching Knights scored 97.95 points out of 100 and also were awarded the Overall Effect Caption Award for their show, "These Kingdoms United." Congratulations to the Director, Mike Bridger, and all of those involved in the Marching Knights program. North Penn community members had the opportunity to ride District's bus to the future. The day-long tour included stops at Penbrook Middle School, Montgomery Elementary School, North Penn High School, and the North Monco Technical Career Center. This unique opportunity allowed for the participants to see firsthand all of the great things happening in our schools. Kindergarten students at Montgomery Elementary School are showing their thanks to some of our troops serving overseas, especially for those who are North Penn parents. The students wrote special messages and assembled snack packs to surprise Montgomery Parents Sergeant Nelson Whitney and his National Guard unit, who are stationed in Kuwait and will not be home for Thanksgiving. Diary of a Wimpy Kid author, Jeff Kinney, stopped by Nash Elementary School as part of his latest book tour, "The Long Haul." During his presentation, Kinney led the audience through his writing and illustrating process and held a question-and-answer session with the students. Congratulations to Penfield Middle School's Jonathan Okazinski, who was selected as one of 33 middle school students nationwide to participate in the Broadcom Masters National Science Competition. Held in Washington, DC, Jonathan presented his project on quantum entanglement and even had the opportunity to meet President Barack Obama. And finally, it is not too late for the once-in-a-lifetime chance to see North Penn High School Theater's production of "Once in a Lifetime." You can buy tickets at the door to see this hilarious comedy of movie-making in the 1920s. Performances are Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 7:30 PM and Sunday at 2:00 PM. That is all for this North Penn News update. For more on these stories and all of our programming 24/7, go to youtube.combackslashmtv. I'm Alexa Duffy. Have a great night.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the Board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the Board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the Board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the Board, the Board President may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. The public should know the Board met an executive session tonight, November 20th, 2014, from 7:00 to 7:30 PM to discuss matters of litigation, potential litigation, and litigation. We're going to move forward with our favorite part of most of our action meetings, which is proclamations and recognitions. Dr. Deitch.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my pleasure this evening to recognize students for their accomplishments in the 2014-2015 National Merit Scholarship Competition as commended scholars, the 2014-2015 National Merit Scholarship Competition as semifinalist scholars, and the 2014-2015 National Merit Scholarship Competition as Hispanic scholars. And with us this evening, we have Judy Turner and our students, so come on in.
Good evening. Tonight, we are here to recognize students selected by the National Merit Scholarship Program based on their ability to show exceptional academic talent and their potential for success in rigorous college studies. Last year, 1.4 million juniors and more than 22,000 high schools across the country took the PSAT qualifying exam in October. 16,000 have been named semifinalists. Semifinalists represent less than 1% of high school seniors in the country. These academically talented high school seniors will now have the opportunity to continue in the competition for over 7,600 available National Merit Scholarships worth more than $33 million. North Penn High School tonight has 23 National Merit semifinalists. This is the largest number of semifinalists we've had at North Penn High School, quite an achievement for the class of 2015. I'd like to present the semifinalists now. Hannah Ambrose. Michael Cha. Kevin Chen. Damian Danaraj. Alexandra Di Stefano. Mallory Dubuz. Anthony Flores. Sung Han. Sarah Hoosar. Serena Jiang. Tina Lee. Patrick Lockwood. Kriya Patel. Rudmila Rashid. Austin Radilla Darsha. Ellen Shi. Radhika Sinha. Tara Sorman. Alonso Trejo Mora. Ryan Tung. Alina Yu. Jerry Chow. About 34,000 students throughout the nation are also recognized as commended students by National Merit Scholarship for their exceptional academic promise. There are 29 students placed in this top 5% of more than 1.4 million students who entered the 2015 competition. Mr. Pete Nicholson, Assistant Principal at the high school, will introduce the commended students.
Shesda Afrin. Alyssa Almeida. Oscar Armus Louis. Harrison Barclay. Jared Boyden, who is also being recognized as a Hispanic scholar. Korway Chow. Danica Klausser. Michaela Cubitt. Liam Fisher. Kelly Harrington. Maximilian Ives. Janice Jiang. Stephen Kang. John Cassander. Brianna Knowlton. Christian Lim. Lauren Marone. Natalie McCollum. Eric McKenna. Edward Metz. Kajal Nakadkar. Neil Nguyen. Alexander Noche. Min Oh. Kara Pearson. Robert Sabanas. Andrew Schlegel. Stephen Thornton. And the following two students are being recognized as national Hispanic scholars. Marissa Elizardo. And Sarah Rubenstein.
Let's give them a round of applause first. I'd like to offer to the full administration and the Board to congratulate each and every one of you, so please file through. And Judy, would you please stop and put your hand up?
Congratulations.
Smart. Well done. Turn back there. They're all, look at all the cameras. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Makes us proud. Congratulations. 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 Well done. Congratulations. 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 It makes us proud. Congratulations. Make us proud. Congratulations. 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 You see what Japan's asking? Congratulations. Great job. Kevin. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Make us proud. Congratulations. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Well done. Nice handshake. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Well done. Nice handshake. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Makes us proud. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Well done. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Well done. Thank you. Congratulations. Wow, man. Cool. It's like the best school in the country.
Thanks for all your effort. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thanks for all your effort. We couldn't do without you.
Well done. Thanks. Please, another round of applause. For those of you guys who are still leaving, remember this will be rebroadcast tomorrow at 7:30 on Channel 28 and Fios 29, and again on Monday and Tuesday at 12:30 and 7:30, and also Wednesday at 12:30 again.
Before we get to the audience of citizens, Mr. President, we'd like to announce that I am pulling letter N from the agenda. Letter N deals with the designation of local holidays, so that will be removed from the agenda.
All right. It's always a pleasure, isn't it? To get that many students, that commended students, phenomenal. And we're going to do this again and...
That's what it's all about, too. Education.
I'd love to see the newspaper at the end of the year to see where all the schools are going to go to. Absolutely.
One said Swafmore.
And I asked another one. She said University of Delaware, Blue Hens. Yep?
Yep. Somebody's doing something right around here, gang. Thanks to the teachers and staff and all.
Big move. Bold move. All right, we're going to move forward with our audience of citizens. Anyone wishing to speak to the Board, you can step forward, state your name and address for the signing of the citizens of the audience of logbook. We did have a request for someone to speak primary, which I believe is the procedure to, they go first, or as long as we make sure they speak? All right. Go ahead, Mr. Bridgell.
I'll sign this after the meeting, so I can expedite my delivery here, so that if anybody else would like to talk. I would like to recognize all those students which threw an incredible amount of wor... Oh, my name is William Patchell, and I live at 404 Bonnie Lane, Lansdale, Pennsylvania. And I think it's a credit to the district, a credit to the money that we have put into the system. The outcome, which is so fantastic, I'm sure other districts just wonder how this is all accomplished. It's accomplished by a great deal of work, citizens that serve on the school board tirelessly and expect nothing but to be able to make the future for the stakeholders a really incredible experience. What I want to talk about tonight is, not to diminish this, there's always a height of really great expectations, but there is always an underlying current of things that could be improved. Now, the expenditures which the district has made, I think we're approaching, well, it could be near $250 million. I hope we don't get there every year, but I think we are gradually approaching that. And every four years, it'll be a billion dollars now. The thing that's really, needs to be brought to attention is, at what point will we cease the building, cease the, and actually start to diminish the long-term debt, which almost every level of government doesn't seem to want to deal with that? The federal government keeps expanding the debt, state government expanding the debt, local governments expanding the debt. Very, very few are acting in a diligent kind of way to, a diligent kind of way to reduce the expenditures and to begin putting a slow anchor to stop the forward upward movement to the upper right hand of the chart. I hope that we have sometime, some kind of long-term strategy. I believe the debt is about 100, over $100 million. And I believe a meritorious goal, which we could all work for, is a systematic reduction where in 10 years, hopefully, we might be the only district in the Commonwealth, maybe the entire country, we are totally debt-free. And I think that is really a good topic to work for, because as you know, if interest rates were to start going up, any of these projects which people talk about, oh, we'll just float a bond issue, that may or not be possible. And that's, I don't believe that a 10-year Treasury at 2.35 is something that's going to be the norm or the bar for a very long time. There is always a possibility that this could move up dramatically, and I don't know when that will happen. We also have the problem of many, many people retiring. The retired people have pulled this wagon a really long time. I listened to the town hall meeting, which Senator Toomey had, and I listened to it. Many, many people called in, and he says, you know, we're really worried about the elderly people. We're not getting any raises. The generic medicines are going up incredibly high. I think we might even have that problem ourselves, being self-insured. Generic medicines, what used to be $50 or $60 a month, are now like $1,800 a month. So that's a very challenging area that we need to look into. But the thrust of this whole conversation is, I really worry about the bottom 40% of our students, which find it very, very challenging. Their families find it challenging financially. I don't know how that's going to work out. I don't know the number of graduates that leave here every year. After four years, how many have actually completed the four years of college? I think that's something that would be really nice to know what's going on. But the main thing is, we need to dramatically make a program to look into long-term debt reduction. We might be the only person in this country talking about long-term debt reduction, but I know that we are very, very careful about the money we spend. We have many issues, which your hands are tied, because through state legislation, we have no control over this. So I understand how this difficult situation, it's very difficult. And we don't want to diminish the outcome of what we just saw tonight. It's very, very critical. I just hope that what happens in the future, that these 39 adults don't have to carry 39 million people that have no work, no future, no hope. I don't want to wind up like the Middle East with college graduates sitting around in a square with nothing to do. And this is what causes social unrest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Bill, you should be aware, though, that North Penn does have a debt service plan, and that in the 18 years I've been on the Board, we changed the way we used to do business with long-term debt, and we've reduced long-term debt to the point where we've changed from 30-year bonds to 10-year bonds, so that it gets paid off faster, sooner, and cheaper in the long run. But I can tell you, you can't make a promise that you won't have long-term debt when we have to fix schools. But we did put a plan in place, and we've been using it for the last decade and a half. And at some point, we actually had lower debt than when we first came here, so it was pretty nice. Thank you. There was someone who wished to speak. Do you know the person's name? Okay. Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Joe Butka. I live in Hatfield. I'm here to speak on a proposal here that is about in the middle of the packet, initiated by Tom Schneider. It's the basketball group. There's a bunch of us been playing over at Penfield the last seven to 10 years, my friend Dave Wrigley included, and we're just attending the meeting to hope that you guys will continue to allow us to play basketball there. There's been, we've not had any issues there. We've enjoyed playing here. We all are residents of the area. Like I said, I live in Hatfield Township, and just wanted to let you know that all the guys that play, we call it the old guys' basketball league. You guys call it the Penfield Basketball League. Most of us are in our 50s and all, but we hope that you'll continue to allow us to play. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. And Joe, by the way, that's what our people call it, too, just so you know.
What's that? I'm sorry.
Every time they reference you guys, that's how they actually reference you guys. So it's easy to identify who you're talking about.
Wait a minute. I'm an old man, too.
Yeah, there's a few that fit that category, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, we do have our insurance quote from K&amp;K. That's one of the issues that was raised. We haven't had that before, but it looks like it's required now. We do have an insurance policy quotation from K&amp;K.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right. Oh, you want to come on? Come on. Don't forget to sign the book and state your name and address.
My name's Joy Lake. I live at 930 Woodlawn Drive, Lansdale. I also teach second grade over at York Avenue Elementary School. I just want to say that I feel that our teachers at the North Penn School District is doing a phenomenal job. Actually, my son, four years ago, was one of the students that were here tonight. He now is just finishing his undergrad at the United States Naval Academy. Will be starting grad school in January, and actually during selection today was, he was appointed a pilot. I just want to let you know, I want to thank you for including Wednesday before Thanksgiving as a possibility, as one of our days off for our teachers. I talked to many of our teachers in our school, and they would really greatly appreciate it, especially most of the mothers and fathers who have to actually feed their family and prepare the meals. So I do appreciate you taking that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, let's move forward with the agenda. Recommend approval of the minutes of the October 16, 2014 action meeting, as well as the minutes of the October 27 special action meeting, and the minutes of the work session held November 11, 2014 as circulated. Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions to those items? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Approved. Let's move through with committee reports, and we'll start with education, community, and policy. Suzanne Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. This is a little long, okay? The ECP Committee met on Monday, November 10. Several topics were on the agenda. The Committee recommended acceptance of three grants that were awarded to the district. North Penn High School was selected as the recipient of the $30,000 Dow CAC grant. This grant will be used to support STEM programs and projects, and also promote interest in careers and opportunities linked to STEM. In addition, access to 120 volunteers to assist students with research will be provided. A second grant in the amount of $50,000 was awarded by Merck, Sharp &amp; Dome to support the development of peer teacher workshops for science, English, language arts, and mathematics teachers in grades K through 12. Through the workshops, professional development will be provided that will promote the unification of the instructional practices in these subject areas by focusing on science practices that can be integrated across curricula. The North Penn School District also received a grant from the school food authority. This national school lunch program, School Food Service Equipment Grant, will provide the funds to purchase a CombaTherm oven that is needed in the school nutrition services area of an elementary school in the district. The amount of the grant is for the cost of the oven, which will be $29,200. In addition, we have a new Board Policy 3640, which is payment of bills that was reviewed by the Committee. The policy establishes criteria that will permit bills that satisfy those conditions to be paid and then ratified at an upcoming Board meeting. This policy is included on the agenda for the first reading. The school calendar for 2015-16 was presented to the Committee. Because Labor Day is September 7, the latest date that it can be in 2015, Administration proposed that students begin class on Tuesday, September 1. Beginning school the week before Labor Day will provide more days of instruction prior to the administration of state assessments in the spring. Surveys of the families and staff indicated that a majority prefer starting school before Labor Day. An update on the Pendale change in scheduling period E3 was provided to the Committee, including the rationale for implementing this schedule change and how parent concerns were addressed. The schedule will be evaluated to determine what will happen next year. The Committee was apprised of the school performance profile summary. A score of 70 and above is considered by PDE to be proficient. All three middle All three middle schools and the high school performed above the county average. Elementary schools' results were at or slightly below the county average. The next ECP Committee meeting will be in January of 2015. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of ECP? All right, let's move forward with Finance. Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes, the Finance Report for Thursday, November 20. The Finance Committee met on October 27, and some of the items are, I'll discuss some of the items that were discussed at the meeting. Mr. Ed Furman from Maryland Falconero presented the 2013-14 Audit Presentation. Mr. Furman discussed the audit process this year and how data is collected and processed by the on-site auditors. Changes to the financial statements for the year ending June 30, 2015 regarding unfunded pension liability were discussed, and it's estimated the value will be approximately three times payroll expenses. Mary is presenting an unqualified audit opinion of the 2013-14 Financial Statements. The Committee will move forward with approval of the final audit after the November full board meeting. I believe an email was sent out tonight for all board members, so everybody should have that. We discussed the bill payment process, and you'll see something in, in the, in the agenda tonight regarding bill payments. We discussed delinquent real estate taxes. Mr. Shuraki discussed the 5% collection fee to delinquent taxpayers and how the district is currently absorbing those fees. Changing the policy to bill taxpayers for this fee would require board, board resolution with a January 1, 2015 effective date, not retroactive, which would apply to the July 1, 2014 tax bills. The tax collector will put out notice for delinquent tax collection in November, and this notice will include a note that taxes turned over as delinquent will now incur the 5% collection cost. Some, some of the items that were moved from the Committee to the Action Meeting tonight is the draft of the bill payment policy, presentation of the final audit that was emailed, and the delinquent tax collection 5% fee methodology. The next meeting will be this coming Monday, November 24 at 6:30 p.m. following Support Services. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Finance this evening? Let's move forward with Safe Schools. Mrs. Murphy.
Thank you. The Safe Schools Committee met on November 10 and discussed the following. Mr. Wilson presented a draft emergency management plan that has been in development for the past year. This plan was developed in cooperation of Dr. Sean Arney, Principal Montgomery Elementary School, Montgomery Township Police, Montgomery Township Department of Fire Services, and the North Penn School District. This plan is a comprehensive, site-specific plan that guides the staff and administration through many potential incidents. This draft will be finalized in the near future, and similar plans will develop, be developed for each school. Mr. Wilson and I discussed how we are working with North Penn School and Community Engagement Department to expand North Penn Safe Schools' web presence and community outreach in an effort to better inform the community of the district's Safe Schools' activities and programs. Mr. Wilson and Mr. Schneider discussed recent meetings with Hatfield Township regarding hazmat shelter and place drills and automates, and police to discuss the potential ability to view the district's surveillance cameras in case of an emergency. I discussed in a presentation that I reviewed recently regarding an active shooter drill that Southern York District recently conducted. This drill included the entire community, students, staff, and local and county law enforcement, which taught Southern York School District many lessons. The Safe Schools Committee will have a presentation at our next meeting to discuss if North Penn will entertain conducting this drill. The final items discussed include future potential Safe School Grants, which are being investigated for the future, and an update of the current and future Safe School Projects. The next meeting of the Safe Schools Committee is scheduled for Monday, January 5, 2015, at 6:30 at the ESC. Thank you.
Any questions for Safe Schools this evening? Personnel, Mr. Kerr.
Personnel Committee met in executive session November 4 from 6 to 7 p.m. to discuss matters of personnel negotiations and potential litigation. End of report.
Thank you. Support Services, Mr. Schilling.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. The Support Services Committee met Monday, October 27 and discussed the following. Kevin Monero, a North Penn baseball coach, presented a plan to construct grandstands on the varsity baseball field. The baseball team would raise the funds necessary to construct the stands and ask for a Support Services Committee support if the funds were raised. The Committee recommended that Mr. Monero work with the administration staff and other coaches to work out the details, and suggested that a presentation be presented at a future board work session. Also, Mr. Medica, associate, has presented a brief presentation regarding the scope of potential future high school project renovations. The Support Service Committee requested an alternative scenario be presented at November Support Service Committee meeting. Also, Mr. Snyder presented one change order for the Hatfield renovation addition project and one deduct change order for the Penfield modular classroom project. Both change orders are on this evening's agenda for consideration. The Support Services Committee also discussed a facility use request by a group of residents to rent Penfield's gym to play baseball one evening a week. This request is in accordance with board policy 1330, use of school facilities. This request is on this evening's agenda for consideration. And also, Mr. Snyder provided an update on the current projects, discussed administrative process and procedures for future change orders. Our next meeting will be held this Monday, November 24 at 6 p.m. here at the Educational Service Center. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions for Support Services this evening? North Penn Education Foundation, Mrs. Murphy.
Thank you. At last week's monthly meeting, we had the privilege of visiting Oak Park Elementary School. Teachers Shirley Bergman and Linda Roberts presented to us about the wonderful grants we have supported through the years. In particular, we learned firsthand about the science fair, which we fund annually, and had the treat of dissecting an owl pellet. We really weren't expecting such an exciting morning, but we sure did enjoy it and appreciate the effort Mrs. Bergman and Mrs. Roberts put into their presentation. The Foundation's annual appeal to donors was mailed recently, and I hope that everyone can find a way to support our organization. In addition, on Giving Tuesday, the Tuesday after Thanksgiving, we will launch our staff tribute campaign, in which North Penn School District employees can be recognized around the holidays with a gift to the Foundation. Currently, the Foundation is seeking mid-year grant requests. The deadline is November 30, and we have set aside $15,000 to fund these innovative projects. This is in addition to the 24 grants already being in support of this year worth more than $13,000. And if any, any teachers are at home watching this board meeting, we hope that you'll remember that the deadline is coming up soon. Any questions about the Foundation can be directed to Kristi Libarowski at the ESC. Thank you.
Excuse me. Did you say you examined an owl pellet?
Oh, we did.
Is that what I think it is?
Oh, oh, it was really horrifying.
Oh, good.
Oh, wow. It was, luckily I had a meal counterpart that helped. Lots of bones and all kinds of other stuff.
The follow-up to the question would be, what was the results of the examination? But I'm not going to ask.
Any other questions for North Penn Education Foundation tonight? North Monco Technical Career Center, Mr. Kerr.
Yes, the Joint Operating Committee met Monday evening. Couple topics. The audit report came in clean for, for the Monco, VOTEC. The, there's discussion, and I think there is going to, they're going to bring back to each of the four sending districts that borrowed money for the renovation of the VOTEC, a resolution to refinance the, the borrowing. Contingent on getting the, the right number, and what that, what I mean by that is, you know, the right savings in terms of interest rates and, and some other costs associated with that. At the moment, it appears that it's a good time to strike to, to save some money, that we, that we will see immediately, you know, in the first year, or I guess at closing, frankly. It's not a whole lot of money, but $150,000 at the moment is better than nothing. And it, you know, it doesn't extend anything. It's, it, it sounds as if it's, it's an appropriate way to go, to the extent that the conditions that are placed on it work out. Also, just for our benefit, there, there will begin, I think the, the teacher's contract there expires in June, so come January, they will begin some discussions and initial negotiations with, with the union there. I think that's it.
All right. Thank you. Any questions of the North Monco Technical Career Center? Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Murphy.
One last time. The MC IU Board met on Wednesday, last night, at the Norristown site. The IU received approval to appoint an online learning and professional development program administrator. We will be developing this area of expertise in the coming months, and this is very new. As I said, it was just voted on last night. The IU had another clean audit for the years 2010 to 2012. Stan Whistler and his staff recommended for their efforts. There was a review of the 2015-16 Special Ed Budget. It comprises 70% of the entire IU budget. They figure it was $69,296,375. The Basic Ed Formula Committee continues to meet. Dr. Dietrich was one of six Montgomery County superintendents who testified before the Funding Commission. Today, an application was submitted by the IU to head up the Head Start Program in southeastern Pennsylvania. If we receive this grant, it will include 27 classrooms at 13 different sites. Hospital 435, now Act 153 of 2014, was signed into law on October 22. Unpaid volunteers who work in the schools must have a police background check. It will affect all of the schools in Montgomery County. Dr. George ran his first meeting as the Director of the IU. Our next meeting is on Wednesday, January 28. Respectfully submitted, Carolyn Murphy.
Thank you. Any questions for the Montgomery County IU?
Just one, excuse me, one comment. For those that don't know, the VOTEC does not have a full-time business manager. The business manager is shared with the IU, and they've done a great job, she's done a great job in, in just keeping the finances square. And I just wanted to mention that, since you report an IU.
All right, we're going to move forward with the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you. I recommend approval of a settlement agreement for student 1120141, whose name is on file in the office of the Superintendent.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of expulsions for students 1120142 and 1120147, whose names are on file in the office of the Superintendent. The students and parents have waived their rights to an expulsion hearing.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion will carry.
Recommend approval of the changes to the program of studies for grades 9 to 12 for the 2015-2016 academic year per item 6114A through G.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, seconded by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Environmental science, just peter it out, huh?
Yeah, that's, unfortunately, it has not run the last few years due to lack of enrollment.
Rocks and dirt and clouds.
You're not going to say advanced British literature?
Same thing, yes. Unfortunately, they are not beating down the doors for advanced British literature.
Can I share with you, though, that environmental science was like one of the majors for most business people? Because it was the easiest thing to learn. Rocks, dirt, clouds. So they would fill them up with business people.
That's what my son has right now.
Then they went to, I think they changed it, went to simple math, chemistry for business after that. So, yeah, I get it. It's a shame, but you're right.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Approved.
I recommend approval to increase the per diem substitute teacher rate from $110 to $115 per day, per item 6314.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy. Seconded by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of the 2015-2016 school calendar, per item 6414A through B.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Leonard. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the designated Act 80 days for the 2015-2016 school year, per item 6514.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion will carry.
Recommend approval to accept the Dow Chemical CAC STEM Grant for the Spring House area for the 2014-15 school year in the amount of $30,000, per item 6614.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock, seconded by Mrs. Leonard. Comments, questions? Can somebody tell me why we're doing it for the Springford area?
The Spring House area.
The Spring House area.
No, that's, that is, that's the name of the grant.
Oh, okay. Because I would think that would be Westlake.
Well, that's where the.
I know, that's where they're based. Yeah, I know, I pass them.
That's the grant that the, for the nanotechnology program at the high school that Mike Boyer presented on, yes.
I just wanted to report that Monco applied for that grant, and we beat out Monco for that grant.
Absolutely.
It's the way it works. Who else applied for it?
Montgomery County Community College also applied for it.
Community College?
Yes.
Well, they already have a nanotechnology. Yeah, they already have one.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Approved.
I recommend approval to accept the Merck Foundation Grant in the amount of $50,000 for the 2014-15 school year, per item 6714.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions?
Abstain.
That's fine. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstention. There you go. We got one abstention. And thank you.
Recommend approval to accept the National School Lunch Program School Food Service Equipment Grant in the amount of $29,200 for the purchase of a ComTherm oven for the School Nutrition Services Department, per item 6814.
Motion by Mr. Schilling. I need a second. Seconded by Mrs. Leonard. Comments or questions? Yes, everyone wants the picture of this oven sent to them, so would you please send a $29,000 picture of this?
What is it? What's a ComTherm?
A ComTherm?
The combination of.
Maybe it's a rotisserie, who knows?
It does it all for you, and it tastes good when it's finished.
Is that it? Okay.
We can get pictures. We'll have a picture sent, everybody. I'm sure we can scan something that's in the mail. All right, I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor? Purchased.
Recommend approval of an add change order, GC3, for Low Bar Incorporated for the Hatfield Renovations Project. The change of contract amount is an additional $4,844.87 to install concrete dowels in the boiler room floor slab, per item 7014.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions?
Yeah, what are, what are they for?
Dowels in the concrete slab. It's important to slab to be stronger because we're putting more equipment on.
Oh, it's to hold additional weight.
These are rebar dowels to reinforce interior partitions.
Thanks.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of change order EC1 for Electrotech Incorporated for the Penfield Modular Classroom Project. Change of contract is a deduction in the amount of $21,424.37 for service revisions and other miscellaneous items, per item 7114.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to allow the Penfield Basketball Group use of the Penfield Gymnasium to play basketball through the 2014-15 school year in accordance with School Board Policy 1330, per item 7214.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by another old guy, Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions?
Only if they change the name to, from the Penfield Basketball Group to, what did he call it? The Old Guys, the Old Guys, the Old Guys Group.
There you go. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Approved.
In good health, gentlemen.
Recommend approval to adopt the Comprehensive Plan for the North Penn School District for 2015 through 2018, per item 7314A through E. 2015 through 2018, per item 7314A through E.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Murphy. I know.
That's why we need the buttons.
Any comments or questions? I'd like to thank you for all the hard work that you had to put through. This was an amazing effort and it's going to yield some great results.
We're very appreciative, thank you.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of the Sweet Stevens Katz &amp; Williams Fee Letter for the 2015-2016 fiscal year. For routine matters, the standard hourly rate for chargeable time is $150 per hour for attorneys, $125 per hour for legal assistance. For non-routine matters, the hourly rate for chargeable time is $195 per hour for attorneys and $125 per hour for legal assistance.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Kerr. Seconded by Mrs. Leonard. Comments and questions? Why are we hiring them?
This is actually a fee letter in the event that we do use them for anything. It's very rare at this point in time that we use Sweet Stevens, but we do, at times have used them in the past.
Typically conflict stuff, right?
Exactly. Yeah.
Hearing, you know, if we need separate counsel for a hearing, that kind of thing.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Want to do a roll call? Mr. Brown. Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Schilling?
No.
Mrs. Charnock?
Yeah.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
And Mr. Shapinski?
No.
All right, passes 6 to 3. Let's move on.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions?
I just want to say thank you very, thank you very much to all these wonderful people and organizations who donated this stuff. It's fabulous. We really appreciate it.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Recommend approval of the Personnel Items as listed, A through C.
So moved. Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of student travel, per item BA8.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock, seconded by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of contracts, per item BA9, copies of which are on file in the office of Business Administration.
Motion by Mr. Kerr. Seconded by Mr. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of alternative placements, per item BA10, copies of which are on file in the office of Special Education.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
This concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Finance Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. This report is through the month of October, 2014. Cash receipts for the month of October totaled $14,49,206.96. Cash disbursements for the month of October were $26,76,178.34, giving us a total available fund balance through October 31st of $161,272,767.27. End of report.
Thank you. While we move forward with sanction and approval of invoices.
Thank you, Mr. President.